Are you all ready? You ready to go?
You ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the August 13th meeting of the St. Charles County Council. If you would all please rise for the invocation led by Ame Castro from Harvester Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we come before you. I thank you for the opportunity to have this day and the opportunity to live according to your principles and your laws. My request tonight is that you may bless this council meeting tonight, giving us your guidance to every member of this council and your guidance through every people that are present here, ready to deal with issues related with this county. I thank you because we have the opportunity to discuss, under your guidance, all these things for the benefit, for the well-being of the citizens and residents in this area. I thank you for this opportunity. Help them, everyone, to observe, to put the interest of others before our own interest. Help this council to be good stewards of the resources and the needs of the people in St. Charles County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Joe Cronin?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel?
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Wynn?
Hello, my phone.
Councilmember Terry Hollander?
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Doherty?
Here.
Councilmember John White?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing for traffic regulations. Is there anyone here to speak this evening on the traffic regulations on our agenda? If so, would you please come forward and make sure, before you leave, that you fill out a speaker's card if you haven't already done so.
My name is William Leposhia. I'm a trustee of Glen Allen Estate Subdivision. Our request is that a no parking zone be created along the east side of Glen Allen Drive, from the entrance to the subdivision, which is at Canoust, extending 150 feet along south on that east side of Glen Allen Drive. Reasons for this: This is the only entrance or exit to our subdivision. It's, uh, we're served by two different school districts, so we have double the amount of buses coming in. We do not have a universal trash service, so we have different trash haulers coming in daily, at all times. Creates a traffic issue. There are no houses in this area that we're requesting the no parking zone be created. So it really wouldn't inconvenience anybody as far as parking in front of their homes. It would make it a lot safer for the residents of the subdivision and our visitors if this were put into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing about the traffic regulations? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Bev Todd with Eagles Landing Subdivision, and we're requesting a stop sign at Barclay and Eagles Drive. Ohms Farm has put in a new subdivision of 724 houses. There's only two exits so far, one going to Ohms Farm and one coming down Eagles Drive. It's a four-block, straight shot. We have a rate of speeders. We have no, you know, we have different garbage trucks, construction trucks running up and down the street. We have school buses that pick up the kids there. Anyway, it's really became a dangerous street, and we would like a four-way stop sign there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on the public hearing? Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Dillman. I'm here to speak against the no parking in Barbara Drive, and I run a small business out of my home, and it's just another neighbor's harassment. I mean, he's constantly calling me and harassing me and screaming obscenities at the house because my employees park in the street in front of my house, and he doesn't like it, so he just decided to take it upon himself to start harassing me. And when I wouldn't deal with his harassment, I guess, the way he wanted to, now he's filing a petition or something, so you can't park out there. And I mean, it's really gonna be a hassle for me and my other neighbors. And that's just about all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Tittle, and I live at 102 Glen Allen Drive, and I live there with my wife, my 27-year-old son, Brian, and we've lived there for 17 years, and we do, the reparking restriction that they want to impose on Glen Allen will definitely affect me and two of my neighbors. Now, I live on the west side and the east side. There's only two places on the west side that you can actually park, and often, people that come to my house will park on the east side. There's probably five places you can park on the east side and only two on the west side, and I drew a little sketch of what it looks like.
You can put it on the overhead.
I don't know if it'll show up on here. How does this work?
It will show up on the screen to your left.
It's kind of, that's a rough sketching, excuse me, on that. I live at 102, and this is the entrance coming in on 150 feet on the west side. As you can tell, you can see there's one parking place in front of 100. There's also only one parking place in front of my resident 102. Between mine and 104, there's a real small area with my mailbox on a corner there, and there's really no place to park. So as you can see, across the street, there's approximately 150 feet before the driveway of 101 Glen Allen. Now, he parks vehicles out there once in a while, and I do, and 100 will park a vehicle, mostly on the west side, but occasionally on the east side. So it'll definitely affect three of us.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, is there anyone else to speak? No, I'm sorry. This is the first of two public hearings for these items that are on the agenda. Mr. Takowski, would you come forward and, and explain the process by which you review these?
The matters before you tonight are the result of petitions that have been submitted by various residents in the county requesting these traffic regulations. Following the two public hearings, staff will go out and review the locations, look at the conditions, and review the requests and the comments that have been made, and come to the council with a recommendation, at which point, your deliberations will decide which of those you may want to or not adopt.
What timeline do you foresee for your recommendations?
I would think this would, I would guess probably for the October meetings. The bill would be, would come forward for the October meetings.
Okay, okay. So this will be on for public hearing again in two weeks, but it will just be the same items?
That's correct.
And there will be nothing that will be done, no action taken on these items, until they're brought forward in October or sometime later?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Are there any other people to speak on the public hearing? Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, hearing done, that closes the public hearing. Next on the agenda is public comments. Very similar, but on this item, you can speak to anything, whether it's on the agenda or not. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. Once a topic is opened, we will alternate between pros and cons till we've had three speakers on each side. When you come forward, please state your name and your address, and before you leave, make sure you give a speaker card to the ladies at the table, and please keep your comments kind and civil. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Carol Leones, and I live at 27 Eagle Cove Lane in St. Charles. I'm a retired educator, and presently, I'm the choir director at First United Methodist Church on First Capitol Drive. As you know, I'm a member of Smoke Free, St. Charles County, and I think at this point you all understand our stance on smoke-free indoor air. Quite simply, keeping smoking indoors exposes employees, residents, and visitors to a known hazard. We are simply asking smokers to step outside. Ordinances that are strong, simple, and fair eliminate confusion with the public, put all businesses on a level playing field, make enforcement easier, and give full health protection to all employees and patrons. Across the United States, thousands of other cities and states have comprehensive smoke-free laws. Why not in St. Charles County? With the abundant science about the dangers of secondhand smoke, widespread exemptions are no longer acceptable. Simply put, it's time for change. The voters of St. Charles County deserve a real choice this November, one that can save lives, instead of one that does almost nothing for health. Let us have the opportunity to make our voice heard and place a countywide, comprehensive smoke-free ordinance on the ballot for a vote of the people. It's about health, and it's about time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak against this bill?
I'll try to get it done in three minutes, but it's gonna be close.
Talk fast.
See, which way is?
If you just lay it down, pretty soon it'll show up.
My name is Jim Pepper, 41 Sanibel Court, O'Fallon. I'm here to speak against Bill 3881. With the introduction of this bill, it appears that the councilman is trying to do an end run around the proposed initiative petition. The whereas clauses of this proposed bill contain innuendos, half-truths, and, in my view, some outright lies. The studies cited have been disapproved over and over again, yet the anti-smoking granny state advocates continue to spout the same rhetoric over and over. According to the Reference Manual on Scientific Evidence, 2nd Edition, that's the official guide for judges to understand and rule on science introduced in the courtrooms, nearly all the studies cited in the Surgeon General's report wouldn't pass muster in a court of law because they are observational studies, the sample sizes are too small, or the effects they show are too negligible to be reliable. It states the threshold for concluding that an agent was more likely than not because of an individual's disease is relative risk greater than 2.0. Most of the research the Surgeon General cites was rejected by the federal judge when the EPA first tried to classify secondhand smoke as a human carcinogen. The judge said the EPA cherry-picked studies to support its position, misrepresented the most important findings, and failed to honor scientific standards. The Surgeon General's report relies upon the same studies and makes the same claims as EPA did over a decade ago. Researchers Enstrm and Kabat, published in the British Medical Journal, found that the results do not support a causal relationship between environmental tobacco smoke and tobacco-related mortality. Of the 95 studies that I have here, part of it's, let me turn it that way, part of it is shown here, only 10 show a risk factor of two or higher, and those were done with less than 100 individuals in the study. The Surgeon General's report raises questions about bias, error, and the deliberate orchestration of public opinion. The ones who echo the Surgeon General's claim fall into one or more of five groups: government agencies, which exist largely for the purpose of discovering and publicizing health risks, even if they are backed by dubious research; some corporations, notably Johnson &amp; Johnson, which make smoking secession aids, which gives liberal advocacy groups hundreds of millions of dollars to demonize smoking and compel more consumers to use their products; liberal advocacy groups such as the Center for Tobacco-Free Kids, American Cancer Society, American Legacy Foundation, and many, many more, which clearly profit from increased public attention to secondhand smoke; the news media, which simply publish the news releases from the first three groups; and last but not least, politicians who read newspaper stories and hear from the advocacy groups and rationally calculate that their odds of being re-elected improve if they proclaim deep concern over secondhand smoke and propose solutions that will cost taxpayers and consumers billions of dollars annually. May I finish? I heard a beep-beep.
15 seconds.
Okay. The solutions in the ante is want to require all government higher taxes on cigarettes, bans, and smoking, et cetera. On September the 15th, Mr. Cronin said, I am quoting from the newspaper, "It is just another infringement on a lot of folks' rights. It's probably going to be best to put before the voters." With that, it makes me question, why the switch, sir? Why indeed? Could it be possibly that there may have been or will be donations made to, for political aspirations from the, some of the mentioned groups? I said, "You all didn't build these businesses. Don't destroy them." While I'm in disagreement with any ban concerning this issue, the initiative petition appears to at least give businesses, owners, the chance to forge their own destiny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Lee, and I live with my husband, Rick, at 19 Briarwood Trail in St. Peters, and I have the distinct pleasure to be able to manage the Siteman Cancer Center at Barnes Jewish St. Peters Hospital, which is part of the BJC healthcare system. And last year, this council passed a bill that would have allowed voters to decide if they wanted St. Charles County to be smoke-free, and there were some issues that it didn't get any further than that. Tonight, I'm asking you to, again, give voters that choice by putting a strong, simple, and fair, smoke-free law on the ballot in November. As you've heard many times before at this podium, smoke-free indoor air issues is one about health and about saving lives. Health continues to be the real issue at stake here. Just a reminder that the Center for Disease Control states, "Secondhand smoke causes heart disease and lung cancer in non-smoking adults. Even brief exposure to secondhand smoke can be harmful to health. Strong smoke-free air ordinances reduces disease and improves health." These are facts undisputed in the scientific, medical, and public health communities. Each day in my work at Siteman Cancer Center in St. Peters, I see people affected by a lack of strong smoke-free indoor air policies in St. Charles County. The sad truth is, the longer we debate and discuss the issue, more people are being exposed to secondhand smoke and becoming sick, and with conditions that might not be reversible. The choice to smoke may be an individual one, but there's also an individual freedom not to breathe a secondhand smoke from others. It's our choice, maybe not to smoke, but we don't have a choice. We have to breathe. Placing a strong, simple, and fair indoor smoke-free law on the ballot will allow the voters to choose to protect themselves from the effects of secondhand smoke. This can be a historic opportunity for voters in St. Charles County to express their opinion on the issue. Please, allow the St. Charles County voters a real choice when it comes to protecting their health and expressing their right to breathe smoke-free indoor air. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for?
For or against? She was for.
Against. I marked her in the wrong column.
My name is Carol Gold, and I'm the owner of the South 94 Bistro in St. Charles, St. Peters, Missouri. I, I understand that this is a last-ditch effort, Mr. Cronin, but as a business owner, as a true business owner, as you are, it would be like me walking into your business on Highway M in O'Fallon and saying that you can't sell gasoline products because it causes elements in the air that causes cancer. If it is such a health issue, lady and gentleman, then why hasn't the Center for Disease Control legalized or taken them away so that you can't sell them? Make them illegal, period. But don't sit here and take away everyone's freedom of choice. It is for everyone. Land of the free, home of the brave. We've got men and women who went over and they choose to go into the military. They choose to be non-smokers. We choose to be business owners, Mr. Cronin, and in this economy, in today's economy, it is tough for all, including you. And all I can say is this is the land of the free, and freedom of choice is what I stand for as a business owner. Thank you.
Now, I'd like somebody that would like to speak for this issue, but I would like to remind you to please not have your comments be personal attacks on any one person or office holder.
I'll keep this brief. I don't have a lot of comments. My name is Chris Lewis, and I live at 121 College Drive here in St. Charles, and I'd like to voice my support for the smoke-free indoor air in St. Charles County for myself, my children, and my new baby grandson. I understand a lot about freedoms. My son is over in Afghanistan right now, and my father served in the military, and I respect their coverage of our freedoms, but I'm not sure I should say too much more about that, but it's, it's important for people to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, is there anyone to speak against this item?
Thank you. My name is Dan Baumert. I own the 10 Hot Shot Sports Bar and Grills in the greater St. Louis area. My O'Fallon store and my Illinois store have both been affected by bans on smoking. One of the big lies told by the Cancer Society is that, oh, it doesn't affect our, it increase, actually increases sales. My O'Fallon store's sales are off 30% since O'Fallon enacted their smoking ban. Four of my competitors have actually closed their doors because people can go three to four blocks and go to St. Peters and enjoy smoking while they're drinking. My Illinois store was off almost 30%, 27% in the first year that Illinois went smoke-free. I, myself, don't smoke, and I am, for anybody who does not want to smoke, as a business owner, I am disappointed that so many individual communities and counties would think that this would be a good idea as opposed to a national or statewide referendum to stop smoking. I'm all for that, but let's don't do it community-wise or county-wise, as opposed to doing it state and national-wise. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers on the smoking ordinance. Is there anyone to speak on any other topic this evening?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Elman and his staff, I'm here to speak, my name is Tim McMahon. I'm an employee of the Sheriff's Department and have been so for 27 years. During that entire time, I've worked under a sheriff, and I know that a number of my colleagues feel the same way as we should work under an elected sheriff. The bill that's being proposed, 3880, would take the ability of the taxpayers and the voting citizens of this community, it would take that ability to vote for sheriff, the chief law enforcement officer of the community, take that away from them. Therefore, that person would be appointed either by yourselves, or Mr. Elman, or his successor. I believe that the taxpayers of this community have shown that back in 95, when it was brought up, this very bill, one exactly like this one or very similar, was brought up in 95, and it was beat, I think, 70% to 30% at that time. I do believe that the taxpayers will feel the same way if this is an issue that you want to put before them. I can tell you, as an employee of the Sheriff's Department, and speaking with numerous people who work for the Sheriff's Department, and people that I know through the community are opposed to that situation that you're considering at this point. I believe the taxpayers have the right to vote for who they want to be, their chief law enforcement officer in that community. Every, every county in the state of Missouri has an elected sheriff, whether or not, like St. Louis County's situation, where they have an elected sheriff and they have an appointed chief of police. I'm sure that was a big issue at the time when it came up as well. The cost, and I don't know if you all have, or Mr. Elman's office has, thought about the exact cost of what this is gonna take to make it happen. Every uniform that's owned by a Sheriff's Department employee, other than the civil process, court services people, and prisoner transport, will all have to be changed. Every car that you have out on the street currently, all the stripings on every vehicle will have to be changed. The command structure, you're gonna have to have a command structure for the Sheriff's Department, you're gonna have to have a command structure for the Police Department. Think about what that's gonna cost. I know that the chief of police of St. Charles probably makes over $120,000 a year. So, we've talked in the past about what we can do to help out the employees of the county, how we can get them more money so that they can take care of their families. I believe if we do this, it's gonna penalize those people, all county employees, all approximately 1,000 county employees, will be penalized because the county will spend that monies to separate the Sheriff's Department and Police Department. It will cost hundreds of thousands, I'm sure, of dollars to make that happen, from top to bottom. Then where's the money gonna come for pay raises and things of that nature? Thank you.
Are you here to speak in favor of 3880?
My name's Greg Cross. Live 2606 Stillwater Drive in O'Fallon. I'm a member of the Sheriff's Department also, and not so much as a Sheriff's Department as a citizen of the county. I've been here several times. Other bills have come up where you folks didn't have all the information, and you decided, you know what, let's table this item until we can get all the information. But it seems like here tonight, in reference to Sheriff's Department slash Police Department, we're gonna make a decision when we don't have all the information. And the information you don't have is, if the citizens do choose to go to a Police Department, what's the process? How are we gonna hire the person? Are we gonna advertise nationally? Is it gonna be through the International Association of Chiefs of Police and let them narrow pool down to five, and then you choose from there? Is it gonna come from in-house? Is it gonna be something local? Is it gonna be one individual that's gonna pick the chief? But yet, you guys are gonna decide tonight on something that you don't have all the information about. And I don't know whatever happened with the county or the government any time that a group of individuals, elected individuals, think that they are better off making the choice for over 300,000 people, instead of letting those 300,000 people make their own choice. And if we do that, at what time does it stop? After we get rid of the election for the sheriff, do we look at the county executive and say, well, let's, let's get rid of that? Let's take that choice away from the people. And then at what point do we come after you and say, well, let's take that choice away? And then we lead down the road, I guess, at the end, we lead, we end up with a dictatorship. We have one individual that's gonna make the choices for all of us. Think the country was founded on people, and those people voted, and they elected you to carry forth their voice. Conceivably, all 300,000 people can't talk, so they put you up there to talk for them. But in this instance, what you wanna do is take their voice away from them, and you individually want to decide what's gonna be best for everybody. That might be a case when everybody doesn't have a choice, but now, the way it is, everybody does have a choice. On Election Day, they get to decide. On Election Day, they get to decide who's going to be the chief law enforcement person for their county. And I don't think we should take that away from the people. I know the members of the Sheriff's Department want to keep it the way it is. To my knowledge, since St. Charles County has been here, the system of the Sheriff's Department has not failed the people. So why try and fix a system that's not broke because one individual wants it to be that way? I don't think we, this country, were founded on the wants or needs of one individual. It's what everybody wants collectively with all their voices being heard in the form of a vote. Thank you.
Just a minute, Mr. Deenoff. That's two speakers against 3880. Are you speaking in favor of 3880?
Against.
Then if you would wait a moment, is there anyone to speak in favor of Bill 3880? Then please come forward.
Good evening, members of the county council. A.C. Deenoff, county resident. These bills came up like at the last minute, and after talking to several council members, several council members, I understand, weren't given the proper information. Mr. Dougherty brought up a charter amendment over six months ago that is still tabled on the county agenda, county council agenda. I don't understand why this was brought up at the last minute. There's been no discussion, there's been no debate, there's been nothing given to the community. What I would ask is, why do we need an elected sheriff and a police chief on top of that? I'd like to see the county council instruct the county auditor to come up with a fiscal impact to county residents, and provide by the next meeting a fiscal note to be prepared by the county auditor to tell taxpayers in the county exactly what it's going to cost us from top to bottom. These last-minute charter amendments, including possibly taking duties from the collector, the election authority director, the county recorder deeds, and others, I have a real serious heartburn with that, bringing it up at the last minute and not having fair discussion. I would ask this county council to form a county review commission to do the work of the next six months to one year, made up of 11 county residents, and to prepare to hold public hearings, to have an open and transparent process, to get input from all stakeholders, and a review of all proposals. To shove it down the throats of taxpayers at the last minute is not the diligence of our elected officials. I also ask you, as the county council, to put forward an additional proposed amendment, an amendment of an election commission for the trouble of the election authority. This would consist of three members with three-year staggered terms. One Republican selected by the vote of the County Central Committee, one Democratic selected by the vote of the County Central Committee, one member selected by the county executive with the confirmation of the county council. This election oversight commission would have oversight for fiscal matters, budget, hiring, firing, disciplining of employees, as I've asked you all to do an audit of this authority that's very sorely needed, and the ongoing investigation by the county sheriff's department into missing funds and taking funds from political subdivisions. This commission would provide transparency and oversight of the elected election director, and I feel with the 11 lawsuits that are currently pending before the county of St. Charles and its election authority director that you need to take action. And I ask for this proposal to be put, and I see nowhere in the minutes or nowhere on the agenda that it's being taken up. This is something that's sorely needed for transparency and openness of a fair election process. But for you to take away an elected sheriff from the people of this county, I think, at the last minute, is somebody playing politics, and I think you need to get the facts, hold the research, and hold the correct public hearings. Thank you.
That concludes comments on Bill 3880. Are there any other topics that anyone would like to speak about this evening?
Good evening. I'm Michelle McBride, resident of St. Charles County and the current St. Charles County Collector of Revenue. The St. Charles County Charter is a very sacred and important document. Changes to it should not be taken lightly, nor should they be made without much investigation and consultation with interested and involved parties. Back in 1994, the voters were given the privilege of choosing to retain certain positions responsible for the management of county government as elected, and the voters spoke clearly about their desire to have representation in the government, about their desire for transparency, honesty, and accountability of the administration to the citizens of St. Charles County. These are the people that each of you on the council were elected to represent, the people that I ran for office to serve, the people who entrust all elected officials of this county to do what is best for the county. I respect the employees of the county, and I want them to be protected from unfair business practices and frivolous whimsical treatment, which is the reason and the purpose of the Personnel Administration program, the County Human Resources Department, and the Merit Commission. The St. Charles County has been, and we want it to continue to be, a strong, healthy employer. When you weaken the authority of the people who are directly responsible for the staff, you weaken this county. Most everyone is familiar with the sentiment that a house divided is going to fall. Some of the legislation being proposed in Bill 3879 would aid in accomplishing such a horrific action. If there are problems that St. Charles County government management needs to work on to handle specific situations, then we need to work together as a team, because together everyone achieves more. There are elaborate mechanisms already in place. We have an incredibly knowledgeable and active human resources department that works hand-in-hand with elected officials and department heads when individual situations arise. We have a dedicated and very competent merit commission. What is the purpose of adding Section 4.1501.6 to the charter? This seems to create an environment that will allow mimicking the situation that many of you may have experienced at home in one point or another, when the child goes to mom and gets a no answer, so they run to dad to get a yes answer, and there's no consultation between the two for the health and well-being of the unit. The charter was established to put in place a fair and no more than ample government for the good of the governed. The general populace of St. Charles County employees, for the general populace of St. Charles County employees, the actions presented in the proposed new section 4.1501.6 are not necessary. The only at-will employees in the county are in the executive office, and maybe in the prosecuting attorney's office. All other county employees are already protected by the Human Resource Department and the Merit Commission. This is not a time to add another layer of government. I'm confused as to why, should Bill 3879 become an ordinance, there would be only two questions posed on the ballot. There are at least eight different distinct topics presented in this bill. For the sake of transparency, if this bill is considered, I request that you separate these eight topics into eight separate ballot questions. Again, for the sake of transparency, if the bill is considered, I request that a clause requiring a fully descriptive title of the ordinance be included in Section 2.603.1, and that the bill and any and all amendments in their exact language must be posted at least 30 days prior to its passage, not its effective date. In Section 2.604, I would respectfully request the time period for the county executive to respond to an approved bill not be reduced from five to three working days. That seems like a very short period of time for such a busy person. Regarding Section 2.1003, please consider amending the language to provide for the Central Committee of the respective party to fill any vacancy on the council with approval by the council. Many of the items in Bill 3879 look like a power grab, and as early as the 1700s, historical writings have noted that power tends to corrupt, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
Those comments were on Bill 3879. Is there anyone else to speak on Bill 3879? Is there anyone to speak on any other topic?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Eric Martin. I'm the attorney for St. Charles Tower. I just wanted to let the council know that we are here to answer questions regarding Bill numbers 3876 and 3877, where St. Charles Tower is seeking a conditional use permit and a variance in order to construct a telecommunications tower at 1732 Meyer Road. The tower is needed to close a gap in coverage for U.S. Cellular. Existing towers do not provide the adequate coverage for that area, and we are prepared to provide propagation maps and testimony to the council on those issues. I won't make a full presentation now unless the council would choose to have it occur now, but I am here along with the radio frequency engineer Greg Gilcom to answer any questions that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on the topic of cell tower? Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Dalton. I live at 731 Highway W. in St. Charles County, St. Forestelle. I have eight acres right next door to this West Meyer location where St. Charles Towers wanted to put the cell tower. I myself am strongly against it. These cell towers not only have health hazards, but they also bring down property values from surrounding areas. I've talked to a lot of citizens that live in the city of Wentzville and people that live in St. Charles County that live right in this little area. I have not spoke to anybody that's for it right now. The state of Missouri does have a rule that says that cell towers cannot be, telecommunications towers cannot be located within a mile from each other. This is less than a half a mile from the tower right next to the hospital, and it's also less than a mile from two other towers in the Wentzville area. So this is obviously a violation of State of Missouri code on cell towers. I understand that this board has the authority to overrule that, but I just want to say I'm strongly against it. This went up against planning and zoning. It failed. It went up against, I think it's Board of Zoning, which was a meeting that was last month, it failed that too, and now they're trying to appeal the two boards failing this thing. So I just want to say I'm against it, and I hope you guys consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on cell towers? Anyone to speak on any other topic? Hearing none, that closes public comments. Mr. Executive, do you have any oral report?
Chairman, I do not have an oral report. Obviously, I'm available to answer any questions you may have about any of these bills as they're read the first time.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is a Resolution 12-08.
Resolution 12-08, sponsored by Joe Brazel. A resolution reappointing Ron Birbaum to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottom Drainage District. Whereas pursuant to the St. Charles County Charter, Article 10, Section 10.608, the county council passed Resolution 02-09, establishing a Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottom Drainage District and appointing three residents of the district, namely Leonard Nadler, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff, as its first members for terms stated therein. And whereas by Resolution 0409, 0603, 0608, 07-10, 0813, 0908, 10-11, and 1108, the county council has since reappointed or appointed district residents to the board, and its current members are Ron Birbaum, Tom Kessler, and Ted Struckoff. Whereas because Ron Birbaum's term expires on August 25, 2012, the council seeks to reappoint him to a new three-year term beginning August 26, 2012. Now therefore, be resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council makes the following appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Hancock Bottom Drainage District. Ron Birbaum to a three-year term beginning August 26, 2012.
Are there any comments or questions on this resolution? Hearing none, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
A resolution reappointing Ron Birbaum to the Board of Trustees of the Hancock Bottom Drainage District. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next on the agenda, Bills for introduction. First bill for introduction, Bill Number 3876.
Bill Number 3876, requested by Steve Lauer, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance reversing the Board of Zoning adjustments decision in variance 15100.
I understand that this bill was, or this request was denied by planning and zoning at a vote of three to two, and also staff recommended denial, but this is a bill to reverse the P and Z. Do you have anything to say on this this evening, or would you rather wait until next time?
Mr. Brazel, thanks. Maybe I need to say something.
Okay.
Essentially, this bill is a reason why I think we need to look at the cell tower regulations again for this county. I'm not in support of this. Contrary to what the one gentleman said, this did pass planning and zoning. I do not think that U.S. Cellular had demonstrated that there's a gap in coverage. I drove that area extensively with my U.S. Cellular phone and got four bars everywhere. I never saw anything from any of the, all the information presented in the letterhead from U.S. Cellular that they had a gap in coverage. I just saw stuff presented by St. Charles Tower. Additionally, the gentleman was right when there are a lot of cell towers in the area. One is close as 1,200 foot to this. Simple extrapolation, if you, we have them 1,200 foot apart in this county, we're at 1,900 cellphone towers in this county, and I don't think we want that. So even though my name is on there, as it's customary to introduce it, I'm against this, and that's all I have to say.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Bill Number 3877, please.
Bill Number 3877, requested by Steve Lauer, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 14831 for a telecommunications tower 120 feet in height to James Robert and Mary A. Cummings.
Now, this one did get passed by planning and zoning at a vote of seven to two in favor, and also staff approved this tower. Do you have anything to say on this one, Mr. Cronin?
Pretty much ditto the first one.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Wayne, on these towers, explain the state law and how many, how far apart they're supposed to be.
State law doesn't really enter into it. Our requirements provide for a one-mile separation between towers in an agricultural district, in fact, all of our zoning districts. In an agricultural district, which the subject property is located in, it requires a conditional use permit be granted by the council, which will identify how high you're going to allow it to go, and also that this location is an acceptable location for a tower. I should explain that this particular action of the zoning commission is really conditioned upon whether or not a variance is granted, Bill Number 3876. If that is not granted, you won't be able to act upon this bill. Hope that answers the question.
I don't remember giving a variance on this situation before, have we? At a cell tower this close?
Yes, we have had variances before in distances. Yes.
Okay.
Bill 3878, please.
Bill Number 3878, requested by Bob Shner, sponsored by Nancy Matheny, an ordinance amending the budget of St. Charles County, Missouri, as passed by ordinance 11-109, by providing for supplemental appropriations to the budget of the St. Charles County Human Resources Department.
I understand this is just because of the extra hiring that we've done this year and that we had a shortfall in the original budgeted amount. Does anyone have any other questions on this bill? Hearing none? Whatever the next one is.
Bill Number 3879, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance placing proposed amendments to Article 2, Article 6, and Article 10, and a proposed new section in Article 4, on the ballot of the Tuesday, November 6, 2012, general election, and if enacted by the voters of St. Charles County, ordering the amendments of the following charter sections. Article 2, Sections 2.533, 2.603.1, 2.604, 2.604.1, and 2.1003, and Article 6, Section 6.201, Article 10, Section 10.401, and a new section to be known as Article 4, Section 4. Article 10, Section 10.401, and a new section to be known as Article 4, Section 4.1501.6, such amendment of the charter to be effective upon certification of the election results.
I would imagine we'll have discussion on this one. Would anyone like to start?
I got a couple of questions. I don't, I don't know if I disagree or agree with them, but I would like to know, maybe we should have a work session on this and, or talk about the fact, maybe they should broken, be broken down into sections because they're all kind of different. Steve, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to have it like broken down, like, you know, each category broken down into a different vote, or?
I think you should ask the attorney about that. I don't think there's a problem. I mean, I think that ultimately is up to you.
There's no, there's no problem if you want them separate. I've drafted them as separate, and I drafted them together in part because many of these are pretty, they're pretty minor administrative matters. For instance, you know, the first section is, right now, the county master plan demands that we master plan for other political jurisdictions, whether they want to participate or not. This just moves it back to that they, we'll have them as part of the master plan if they choose to participate. Because, I mean, how do we tell a school district, you will participate in our master plan by giving us something about yours? I mean, they're a separate political subdivision. Similarly, you know, the Section B goes to the fact that right now, a lot of people get their information about what's on our bills from the internet, and this just requires that rather than these very expensive newspaper publications, sorry to the reporters in the room, that we'll be able to publish them on the website where we're finding right now many, many people are looking for them. So, I mean, a lot of them are fairly non-substantive modifications. Yeah, the three to five days that was mentioned, the only reason that's in there is we have two provisions in the charter that are entirely different. One section gives the executive five days, one section gives the executive three days. He has to comply with the shorter one because we don't know which one a court would impose. So we're just, you know, with the office's agreement, we moved it to the three days to the shorter one he's already living by anyway.
I thought that was the days for us to get a bill to him.
I'm sorry, the days for you guys, and then similarly with his office. So...
November, November day.
Right. They're all calling out separate ones, but, you know, there's a movement to move when we give the council the budget from the first day of November to honor before the second Monday, which is the council meeting day, so.
That's probably the one that bothers me the most, but...
Well, that is because that way we will have another month of results. Pardon me? Yeah, sales tax revenue. As you recall, you know, we get that usually the first, sometime in the first week?
Second week.
Second week in November?
Second day.
Oh, the second Monday?
Second day.
Oh, the second day of the month. Okay, so every year when we present you the budget, we get one-twelfth better understanding of where we are the day after we present it to you. So if you want to make it even the second day of November, that would be, that would be better than what we have. But as you know, we're basic, basically making a lot of our decisions on nine months' worth of information, and this would allow you to make decisions based on 10 months of information. Is that correct? Well, okay, so.
But to Joe's question, I mean, they could be separate, or they can be together.
Yeah, I certainly don't think you would want to make every single one of them separate because, again, most of these that have been mentioned so far are going to be 75% issues if people really understand them. But if there's one that you want to make separate, that's up to you.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cronin?
I'd like to say that I like the portion about midterm vacancies in this bill. Councilman Dougherty had brought this up in a bill that he wrote earlier, and I thought it was a great idea. By doing appointed midterm vacancies by filling them by appointment versus a special election, it has the opportunity to save county residents hundreds of thousands of dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent in the past when there was a vacancy. This bill has a mechanism in there that would save the county a lot of money, make a nice, simple streamlined replacement of someone who leaves the middle of vacancy. And I would have a request that not only, as this would apply to county council, but maybe we need to look at this for other elected officials in the county, like for instance, the recorder or the assessor or whatever.
It already applies that way.
Okay.
So this, this just then mirrors the language that exists for the other elected officials. And this is identically Councilman Dougherty's requested language that appears in his bill.
I think it's a real good move.
I think, just since I've been here, we've had three special elections, which have cost us on the average around $80,000 per. And, you know, it's, it wouldn't be the rest of the term, it would just be to the next general election.
It would bother me not to get the budget until the second Monday because that's the night of our meeting when we generally have our first work session, so there's no time at all to look at it and think about it. So that takes a whole meeting time away. It really puts us back two weeks.
Well, do we really? I mean, as long as it's, as long as after the first, even the second, third, or the first Friday or something, I don't, you know, that's something we can talk about.
Okay, we can talk about that before the next one. Any other questions or comments on this bill? Okay, moving on to Bill 3880.
Bill Number 3880 requested by Sheriff Tom Neer sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance placing on the ballot of the Tuesday, November 6, 2012 general election, proposed amendments to and a new section in Article 4 of the St. Charles County Charter, and if enacted by the voters, amending the charter by establishing a county police department, transferring the duties for the patrol division, detective bureau, and other direct police duties and their support functions to the police department, and providing for the sheriff's department to be in charge of court services and security, including prisoner transport, service of process, and bailiff, and other court security duties. Such amendment of the charter to be effective upon certification of the election results.
Comments?
I got some comments.
You do?
I do, I do.
Go ahead.
I did talk to Sheriff Neer about this. He stopped by my house a couple of weeks ago, and I wouldn't commit one way or the other, and I know that Tom Neer's commitment, his commitment to the sheriff's department, his intentions are 100% true and good. I don't doubt that, and I think he's a good sheriff. However, I'm concerned about this a little bit. I think that, again, this is another way of whittling away people's rights to vote on things, whittling away the process. I understand the perspective from the sheriff, and I know he's got, at a mandated meeting, and he'll be here next meeting, but says it disrupts the sheriff's department and makes it dysfunctional for that period of time, which I understand is probably the truth. However, that's how all elections go. You know, we have disruption in the county council with county executive, and in all different cases, if it's a strong race, it's going to be disruptions. And I just don't think that that's a good enough reason. I think that, you know, I have one of the largest districts with the sheriff's department patrols unincorporated area, and I do talk to the guys a lot, and this issue's come up. I've been a councilman for 12 years, and this comes up quite a bit, for the last 10 years, this comes up, well, should we do this, should we don't do it? I never thought it'd be a good idea, but I haven't seen real good reasons as of yet to do this. I don't think the disruption of the sheriff's department is a good enough reason, and then the cost or some other issues. And, you know, I understand that, you know, what we're saying here is, what are people just too stupid to pick the right sheriff? I don't think that's the case. We do have some misinformed voters, there's no doubt about that, but I don't think this is a good enough reason. So I don't, I don't think at this time I'm in favor of this, so I'm really concerned about this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I believe, you know, I really don't know if this is a good idea or not, but I think it's somewhat kind of foolish for us to take a look at this without knowing the cost. I mean, we're obviously in a period of time now where, you know, money is something that's very, very precious, and I really don't have any idea what this would cost. Obviously, on the surface, it looks like it would cost us, you know, considerably more than the system that was in use right now. And I think before we go any farther with this, I think we would, I certainly would like to have some more information about the cost of doing something like this.
Mr. Dougherty?
I think this would be very expensive. It's very expensive just to decal one car. And we keep having these compression discussions and everything else. We can't even take care of the employees we got, and here we are looking at creating a whole nother department, and there's no way I'm going to support it.
Mr. White, do you have any comments?
Just the only comment I have is I think we should have had more time to look at this. We should have started on this beginning of the year instead of in the middle of the year or past the middle of the year, so I think it's kind of late for this year.
Okay. Mr. Cronin?
I have a lot of respect for Sheriff Neer, and I want to withhold my opinion till I hear from him. I have a lot of respect for the deputies, too, and I'd like to hear what they have to say a little bit more detail, and I think it's a good point to bring up, and I know Sheriff Neer's intentions are very good, but I want to hear from Sheriff Neer.
And I agree with you. This bill was brought to us Friday, and I believe was amended in its form that it is now today. Many of us haven't had a chance to study it. We do appreciate the time that you all took to come down and give us your thoughts on it, and I think it would be pushing it for a final vote two weeks from now, but meanwhile, we will talk to Sheriff Neer, and he'll be at the next meeting, I'm sure, on the 27th. Is there any motion to table, or are we just going to leave it for final reading on the 27th with Sheriff Neer here?
Leave it on it.
We'll just leave it as it is, all right. Moving on to Bill 3881.
Bill Number 3881 requested by Joe Cronin sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance calling for the amendment of the charter in the form of a proposition concerning a county-wide ban on smoking in enclosed public places, placing the proposed charter amendments on the November 6, 2012 ballot, and should the voters enact such a ban, enacting a new chapter of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri relating to the prohibition of smoking with penalty provisions.
Mr. Cronin, would you like to open this discussion?
Sure thing. Essentially, real briefly, this bill is modeled after the first bill that passed the council and Mr. Elman vetoed. There are a couple of minor changes I should point out right a bit, and to make things 100% clear. I did pull the cigar bar exemption because Mr. Elman in his veto message, I think, very adequately stated that it's not fair to allow people to smoke cigars and not cigarettes in bars. So that's been removed. Also, Mr. Dougherty had made a good point about medical research facilities, and there is one in our county that happens to be in his district, and I did put an exemption in for FDA-licensed medical research facilities. Other than that, it's essentially the same bill as the 3726 that was passed by the council, which was the first bill I wrote. In, in comment on Mr., to Mr. Pepper's statement that these were half-truths that I put in the beginning of this bill, I, if they're half-truths, they're half-truths. It came from organizations like the United States Department of Health, Missouri Department of Health, the Surgeon General, the Centers for Disease Control. I didn't use the University of Timbuktu, folks. I used government agencies where I gleaned this information. And additionally, I just want to state that three cities have passed resolutions asking this to be for the voters. So we're not making the law and saying, okay, folks, you can't smoke in public places. We're saying to the voters of this county, okay, folks, you get to make the decision. And the casino has backed a proposition that will be on the ballot that pretty much is ineffective if you talk to any medical professionals like Ms. Lee from Citing and Cancer Center, or I've talked to a few people in administrations of hospitals. So when Ms. Gould come up and said it's about freedom of choice, yes, I believe it's about freedom of choice. It's about freedom of choice between picking an ineffective ordinance or amendment to the charter that was bankrolled by a casino, or one that was written with a lot of consultations with medical people and public health officials about something that'll save lives in this county. And that, that's the freedom of choice we're talking about. And that's pretty much all I have. I think the voters in this county deserve something better than a health ordinance that was written by the casino, and that's why I wrote this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Dougherty?
I guess my question's for Joanne. I understand there was a letter from Mr. Hoink to Rich Krismer that the initiative from the bar owners, the casino, or whatever, is not going to be certified. Is that true?
Councilman, actually, Mr. Hoink is here tonight to address that issue. May I have him speak to that?
That's fine. And along them lines, I guess, as far as freedom of choice, I mean, the small business people built this nation, and our veterans defended it, and I ain't going to vote against neither one of them. Thank you.
Bob Hoink, Assistant County Counselor. I was asked by the election authority whether the initiative petition that was submitted last Wednesday to the election authority was, appeared to be legally sufficient. And we have identified two types of problems. One, under Section 9.103 of the St. Charles County Charter, the petition has to contain an enacting clause, and it also has to set out the entire amendment in its full text. That was not done with the 1,834 pages of petitions and the cover letters submitted to the election authority. Also, under Section 6, Article 6, Section 18C of the Missouri Constitution, since this proposal would apply in both unincorporated and incorporated areas, there has to be a statement in the proposal itself of what the limits are between the county and the municipal regulation. That also was not contained in the petitions itself. So we have opined that based on the information presented us by the election authority, the petition is legally insufficient and wouldn't go to the voters. Now, we have not addressed any, anything having to do with sufficiency of signatures, anything like that, because as of today, the election authority was about a third of the way going through the signatures. We really don't have enough facts yet.
And yeah, I understand that we spoke to Mr. Hoink's opinion, to the elections director with his consent that it be discussed in public.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Brazel?
I don't have a comment for you, Bob. Thank you. I got a couple of comments. You know, I've been opposed to the smoking ban all along, and it, it's almost a little frustrating. I mean, the casino, they could have came to a council member and proposed that ordinance rather than spend $100,000 to a lobbyist and get it wrong. And it's almost like they're trying to buy the election, and I understand that's the process, but when Joe called me, I got to admire him for his persistence and consistency on trying to get this through. I told him I probably wouldn't agree with it, nor would I support it, but I admire what he's doing. He's been consistent. He hasn't wavered at all. But with what Bob said, I wasn't going to support, I won't support this anyway. Again, we've been over this all over the place, and I don't smoke, I never have smoked, but I just don't think that we should be telling businesses how to run their business. I don't think we should be interfering with it. I don't even agree with the casino's ordinance, because that, again, is going to be telling people what to do. Well, you're only a 21. I don't agree with that. I don't think, I think government should stay out of small businesses in that, in that perspective. So I wouldn't support either one of them. So hopefully, the casino won't get on the ballot either, but I understand what Mr. Cronin's trying to do is give people a choice, which I guess is okay, but I'm not going to support it, so I don't agree with it, but that's, that's my position.
We've been kicking this around for so long, and you talk about choice. I think, you know, I stand where I stood before. I think it should be in the people's hand to decide.
So you support this bill? Mr. Hollander?
Again, choice is, you know, it's difficult to define. It all depends on who you're talking to. I've, from the very beginning, have supported the idea that the best choice is the one that the 350,000 people in St. Charles County, obviously, they're not all voters, but the ones that do show up in the polls in November, I think that's the choice that we have to go with. And I've supported from the very beginning the idea of allowing the people to decide this issue rather than seven or six council people, and I still support that. I know the... I know the various exemptions caused a great deal of controversy and discussion. It all depends on who you're talking to. But in general, people dislike certain businesses, you know, specifically the casino. And their inclusion in this obviously creates another element of, I don't know, disappointment. But I think it's just the reality of what we're dealing with. So I do support the ordinance, and again, the voters of St. Charles County deserve an opportunity to express their opinion.
This bill that's been introduced is 27 pages long. We got the final version this evening. It has many exclusions. The way I understand it from Mr. Cronin, the bill is presented so that it's like a whiteboard. There's two weeks before a final version would be passed. We have six members of the county council that are present, and Paul Winn, who is present by phone. But everyone is in a different place than this continuum. And getting enough people to pass a bill that would go on the ballot and not be vetoed by the county executive is probably the toughest part. We have people who want no regulation of smoking, and we have people that want total regulation of smoking or smoking ban. So our goal will be in the next two weeks to find out if we can get four without a veto, or five, so a veto wouldn't matter, that would agree on what the exemptions are. Mr. Cronin stated that he didn't want to see the bill on the ballot, the voters deciding on the one that was written by the casino. But the casino, as it stands right now, is excluded in both of these bills. So the casino would be just as happy with this bill as the other one that Mr. Brazel said that they paid for or wrote. I don't know. I think the difference between this and the one that's on the ballot is primarily the bars and the bowling alleys and other places like that. Is that not correct, Mr. Cronin?
No, there's a lot of differences. Ventilation systems are a real easy way to get around that, and that's a big, big part of the casino bill. There's some grandfathering in the casino bill. I mean, if you look at it closely, and after writing four bills, I'm pretty good at reading between the lines, it's pretty ineffective. And the healthcare folks and public health people have picked that out real quick.
But the casino floor is excluded, as it stands right now, in both bills?
The casino's floor is excluded in the casino bill and in this bill, okay? However, I left that in for future debate, okay?
Right. So that's on the table, or on the whiteboard, to be erased or changed?
That's correct.
As is the bar exclusions or not?
We've gone over all the exemptions in prior. For instance, the original bill had an exemption for tobacco stores, and the reason I put that in was because O'Fallon and Lake St. Louis had that exemption, okay? We took that out on the second and third bill, okay? But I tried to model this bill as closely as possible to the first bill because of the support we had on the first bill. So the tobacco store exemption is back in. Mr. Dougherty's case for an exemption for the FDA was duly noted, and I included that. And Mr. Elman's disdain for the cigar bar versus cigarette bar, which I think is a very, very valid point once he brought it out, I took care of that by eliminating the cigar bar exemption. You know, other than that, I'm going to tell you, it's as different, if you read the legalities of it, it's a difference between the casinos as day and night, okay? And it does level the playing field a lot, so that, for instance, the one gentleman that said that the people were driving to St. Peters and not using his facility in O'Fallon. I've heard a little bit from O'Fallon that some of that happens the other way, too. People from St. Peters come to O'Fallon. But it does make things uniform throughout the
Please, no comments.
It does make things uniform throughout the county, which is something that some folks have asked for.
Okay. I think that I said at the very start that I wanted it to be statewide, that I think a smoking ban is fine if it treats everyone the same. Since it is not being addressed statewide, and statewide, they can't seem to get it done, then my second choice would be that it was handled municipal, the whole municipal area, that we would be similar in St. Charles County to St. Louis County. I don't want to see, St. Louis County has a lot of exemptions, a lot of bar exemptions, a lot of bowling alley exemptions, private club exemptions, and of course, casino exemptions. I know it's a smoking ban light, but what I don't want to see is our businesses not on a level playing field with the businesses that are right across the river. That's what bothers me. There's something different that bothers everyone here as far as what the particulars are on the issue. And that's going to be our challenge over the next two weeks, to see if we can come to an agreement. Mr. Brazel?
Just one comment. What I do understand, though, is one reason we proposed this, or Joe proposed this after calling some of the council members, is because of the casino ordinance, correct?
That is, that's 100% correct.
Okay. So if I understand this, if Bob tells us, when will you know, Bob, that that's going to get on the ballot or not?
I would imagine that a certificate as to sufficiency would go out within the next 10 days or so from the Election Authority. I'm not discounting the possibility of litigation from one side or the other, which would probably be sped up. I think August 28th is pretty much an absolute deadline to get something on the ballot, although I'm not sure how that would work out with the election cycle.
So we would know by our August 27th meeting, most likely?
I'm assuming that, yes.
But I do have to tell you that a court could order it on up until six weeks before Election Day.
So I guess it's fair to assume from the county council that if this does not get put on the ballot, then Mr. Cronin will withdraw his bill.
Well, here's the problem with that, Joe. It may take a while for the litigation to happen. If we go past the 28th as a council and don't put anything on the ballot, and the casino prevails in their argument before the judge, okay, the voters will only have the casino smoking ordinance, and they won't have ours. Now, we can play that out for the next two weeks and see maybe it goes through the courts quickly, and maybe St. Charles, you know, County would prevail. But if they do not, okay, the voters are going to get one choice, they're going to get one choice only, and that was the bill that was wrote by the casino.
But I want to understand, Bob, that the 28th of August, when is the absolute deadline to be on the November ballot? That's the question.
28th.
28th.
28th, correct. Even if it's litigated, even if Mr. Krismer says it will not be put on the ballot, and then it's litigated, it won't be on the November ballot, would it, Joanne?
Yes. The final certification date imposed by law is the 11th Tuesday before, so it's the 28th. But if it's in litigation, a judge can order it on the ballot later than that date, only a judge, up until the 6th Tuesday before the election. So it could play out in litigation, if they litigate it, for their period of time, and you could face only one on the ballot, if that's the question.
Right. And again, on that, it could go both ways. If it doesn't get on the ballot, then you have yours on the ballot, and that would be a problem, too, for me. But, I mean, it'd be, you know, but it goes both ways. I see what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
Could I ask, is it Mr. Volmer? Could I ask him to come up and ask him a question? Sir, we've heard your opinion on the proposal and everything. I just, while you're here, I'd like, can you tell us how this is working or not working in St. Louis County? I assume you have businesses there as well.
I do.
What, is that, I mean, is that working well or bad, or are they reconsidering? And what's the story over there?
Actually, if I can, I'd like to speak to all my stores. In St. Charles County, O'Fallon, as everyone is aware of that city.
You got a chance to do that, sir. I just want to know, what experience have you had in St. Louis County? Are people closing down? Or is your business off, is on, what?
I am exempt in most of my stores in St. Louis County because of the way St. Louis County set up their ordinance. We are, we do more alcohol sales than we do food sales, and it's allowed us to be exempt from the St. Louis County bill.
Is that the key, then, how much food versus alcohol?
That's correct. That was St. Louis County's ordinance, in order not to put small businesses in business.
Okay. And as far as, you know, working, the small business people think that's a good thing? Or I assume
It is working. We have not had our stores show a large depreciation in sales. Some of our competitors have gone out of business because they have not met the requirements from St. Louis County. To say that it doesn't have an impact on sales is so wrong. I, you know, I don't know what to say about it. It is extremely wrong.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I have a question for you also.
Sure.
On your stores in St. Louis County, where you're exempted, do you have to have a sign on your door that says that you are a smoking facility?
No. We were far that, to do that, but no, we do not.
Okay. There's no signage in the bill?
No. That would be a good thing as far as we're concerned. All I can say is, it should be statewide. It should not be county to county or municipality to municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cronin?
I don't have a question for this gentleman. I do have a suggestion, if possible. Please, a second, so that somebody else may. Charlie Dooley, Executive of St. Louis County, has publicly stated there's a lot of problems with St. Louis County's ban. I think it might be a good idea for you to call him, Mr. Elman, and discuss theirs.
That's exactly why I asked him to come up.
I believe Mr. White has a question for you.
It was my understanding, I may be wrong, but isn't that exemption just for a few years? Doesn't it run out after a period of time?
No, it is only for businesses that were in business when the law was passed, and those that had the exemption in the beginning would continue to have the exemption. But no new businesses had that exemption, which we have had two franchise stores open in St. Louis during that time, and neither one of those would be exempt.
And is there a sign that says that this is a no-smoking facility?
You like that sign, don't you? No, we do not have to put a sign up. We would gladly put a sign up that, to declare whether our smoking is established or not.
Mr. Hollander?
Just, you know, one final comment here. We're going to spend the next two weeks here, you know, discussing amongst ourselves this also, the ordinance that the, you know, that's under contention probably in the courts eventually. The truth of the matter is, I think that eventually, this is going to be a discussion that needs to be done by the people of St. Charles County rather than just us. And that's why I've supported from the very beginning the idea of putting this on the ballot. And it really kind of upsets me, or maybe I'm just naive, but almost everybody that speaks kind of assumes that if this is put on the ballot, it will pass. Well, I'm not sure of that. I think that's what the people need a right to vote on.
Well, St. Charles is a very conservative town and pretty business-friendly, and I think that it's on the ballot. I think St. Charles would elect to have it a business owner's decision as opposed to being a county decision.
Or not. That's right. That's the discussion that will occur between, rather than seven people, will be occurring amongst several hundred thousand people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we have someone from the American Cancer Society here? Could I ask her a question?
You may.
Real simple. Do you all support anything that is exemptions?
We have in the past in other cities, yes.
So you support, which exemptions do you support?
You know, in the past, we supported the O'Fallon ordinance that exempted the retail tobacco shops and the cigar bars. You know.
Have you supported any of that exemption in casinos?
We have.
Where?
Kansas City, for example.
Okay. But you didn't support the one in St. Louis, in City and County?
That's correct. That's because it had the bar exemption and the casino exemption, the bowling alleys, and kind of went on and on.
So would you support Councilman Cronin's bill, then?
I mean, we'd have to see the final version before we could say.
Well, I mean, the one that's filed.
The one that's filed? I mean, again, I haven't been told what we're doing on that yet.
Okay. Can you let us know?
I will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, declarations? Next on the agenda, table bills. Are there any bills to be removed from the table?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove Table Bill 3827.
There's a motion to remove Table Bill 3827. Is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Dougherty?
Okay. This bill's already been mentioned several times tonight, and I have talked to people in all seven districts about this, and everybody thinks that they, as the voters, ought to have the choice to say whether the county council members are accountable to show up for work. And I'd like to call for a vote on it.
Okay, there's a call for the vote. Is there a second?
I got a que, can we talk a little?
Oh, sure, sure. I'm sorry.
I want to vote on it.
Okay. Mr. Brazel, go ahead.
This, again, is the same way, this is the same thing to me as the, getting rid of electing a sheriff. I mean, I don't see how you can be opposed to one and not the other, Jerry, because what you're doing here is you're saying that the people in this county are too stupid to pick a county council member. If this county council member doesn't show up, then he won't get elected. That's exactly what happened. So why are we meddling in how council members are going to get elected? So if this council member misses four consecutive meetings, for whatever reason, we have to determine what those, if those reasons are valid or not, then by resolution, we have him removed from the council, and then another one is chosen by, picked by the county executive, voted on by the county council. That is messing with the electoral process, and I am definitely not in favor of this. We just keep whittling away, whittling away. Pretty soon, we won't have any elected officials, and we'll just hire someone to run the county. That's how I see it.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I got it. I'd like to answer that. If you read the bill, by resolution is how you would excuse a council member, whether it be a death in the family, a long-term sickness, whether of himself or anything else. The council has the ability to waive something. If a person was deployed, that would be a total different situation. We've had several deputies deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan, and we have always worked that out and everything. If a council member is that serious about his job, don't put yourself in that position. Thank you.
It's not for us to decide.
Mr. Cronin?
I think a lot of this was brought up by Councilman Winn being unable to attend the meetings. And I have a lot of respect for Councilman Winn because he chose to support his family like a good father should. And it's been a tough situation for him, and I admire him greatly about that. I see both sides of this issue, and I'm still going to go back to a suggestion that I had, and I think Paul Winn had, kind of hit it right on the head. A lot of folks don't know, but Paul gave his salary back the time he's missed for these months, and I admire him a lot for that. So my suggestion would be if a councilman misses work, he's no different than any other employee. He misses his paycheck. So I would still, that's a kind of an in-between the two positions of Mr. Dougherty and Mr. Brazel, but that's my opinion. You could, I mean, surely some folks or council members are entitled to miss a meeting or two for vacations or sick lists or whatever. But beyond a certain number of meetings, they don't get paid like any other employee.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Brazel?
So are we going to get in, okay, so this family mother, my mother's sister-in-law, or my, I mean, how are we going to determine what is a valid excuse? I don't understand what the ordinance says, but we are getting into things that we don't need, let the electorate, let the people pick the person for their council member. We don't need to decide if that person is unqualified. I don't miss meetings. I don't miss meetings. I'm just saying, I don't think that this is, we don't need to get into this. We already changed, or the county executive has offered a solution to the fill of vacancy, and I'm probably okay with that because that's a fiscal situation. But for us to determine whether or not a council member has a valid excuse, that's not, that's not our job. That's the people's choice.
This whole bill's the people's choice.
That is correct. This whole bill is the people's choice. I did not support this bill when it was, when it appeared to be. I know it was never targeted to Mr. Wynn, but it did have that appearance, and so I stayed away from this bill. But I think it is important for people in a, in a district to be represented, and if somebody is not able to come to meetings, that hurts the people in that district. If they were two-year terms, I would agree with you, Mr. Brazel, but they're four-year terms, and that can be an awful long time. So I'm going to support the bill, but that's just my opinion. Anybody else?
My, my comments?
Would you make a comment?
Just, just a moment, Mr. Wynn.
You know, addressing Councilman Brazel's point, I think that the people on this council are very intelligent. I think we're reasonable. And I think any county council would, you know, in the future, will be made up the same kind of people that I believe we are. And when it comes to making these decisions, I think most all of us would certainly kind of fall on the side of, or err on the side of giving a person the benefit of the doubt. Obviously, there's going to be situations that, you know, that we have just experienced and that didn't seem to fall under that category. But I just think that, you know, I know Joe's point is that, you know, it puts some power in our, our hands, but I strongly believe that we're, we're people that have good judgment and will not, would not abuse this in any way.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn, yes?
Yeah, I hope you can hear me okay, and I'm not sure how the Skype connection's going, but I just want to, first of all, reference kind of what's happened in my personal situation since this is what it has affected at me. And obviously, for those that followed, this is my first meeting after having lost the primary. So in a, in a situation where my situation is very unique and different, it was referenced in the media a lot, got a decent amount of attention, and obviously, there are people who are not happy with it. And the consequences were that, in a, in a setting where you typically don't even have a primary opponent, I had a primary opponent, and it cost. So I think part of the concern for, will the people have a chance to speak? The people in District Four spoke, so I'm happy with that. I feel that I did my part, and as Mr. Cronin mentioned, I'm still doing my part for my family. So I, part of the reason that I even stayed, and I didn't reference this very often, I don't think, but, you know, the reason I didn't just step down initially was because of that $80,000 cost that has already been referenced in a different time in this meeting. So it's just the anger or frustration or whatever it may be with me, I could have cost the county and taxpayers $80,000. But instead, here I am at 4:30 in the morning, on my time, away from family, doing this. So, you know, I just want to make sure that it's clear that, one, the people have spoken, and two, part of the reason for doing what I did in a unique situation was because of that $80,000 cost that, that I didn't want to put on the taxpayers, and then I also returned my salary. I also want to reference it again, just so it's out there, that Missouri is the only state in the whole country that this situation exists. If this were any other setting, if this were any other state, I would be able to vote on every roll call vote by this, in this forum, in this setting, and I would not have this kind of quote-unquote legally semantics that everyone keeps using, "Well, Mr. Wynn is present by phone," or whatever. I would just be considered present. It's the only state like that, and so because of that, you know, it, it limited my opportunity to vote, it limited my opportunity to, to be heard and to represent on the votes for my district. So I think the people have already spoken, and that's, that's my, my two cents on it. And I appreciate Mr. Cronin's kind remarks. Today, my son starts prep school, and so, so those of you that think that I'm just over here doing whatever, you know, I'm missing family and all those important days as well. So anyway, I'm off topic, but that's my two cents, and I appreciate you letting me make my comments.
And, thank you. And I would like to echo Mr. Cronin that I know you are the first to respond to an email and the first to address the topic. We do miss having you here. It makes it difficult, but it, my vote in favor of this is absolutely no reflection on you. You've done a great job. Any other comments?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Brazel?
Okay, this is important to me because, let's, let's just do a scenario. I'll be real quick. Let's say there's a real conservative county, mostly Republicans, and let's say that one Democrat gets elected to a board of seven, okay? And let's say that Democrat is a flaming liberal, and none of the Republican council members like this, this flaming liberal Democrat county council member. And let's say that, and I'm not, I am not talking about Jerry. No, 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 I didn't mean that. No, I didn't mean that. But I'm just giving a scenario here. So let's say that this flaming liberal drives everyone crazy, okay? And that something happens to this person, they break their arm or whatever the case may be. There may be some minor issues, family issues or whatever. That county council member, one county council member could gun in for that guy and try to get that person off the county council. Whether or not that person's reasons are legitimate or not, that county councilman could push those Republican conservatives to get rid of them. And it could be flipped the other way. It could be all Democrats against a conservative Republican. It's just a bad thing to do. That's all I'm saying. It's a bad thing to do. The people chose, Paul Wynn is doing what he has to do to support his family. The electoral process worked. He did not get reelected if the people in St. Charles County didn't want him. It's how it's supposed to work. We are not supposed to be deciding whether or not a county council member is qualified or missing meetings for whatever reason. That's not our job. That's the people's job. And that's, I feel very strong about this.
Okay. You are right with that?
Well, I'd be able to flame up or something.
So noted. If there are no other comments, would you read the title and call the roll, please?
An ordinance placing proposed amendments to St. Charles County Charter, Article II, Section 2.1002 and Section 2.1003, relating to the forfeiture of office of county council members by adding forfeiture for failure to physically attend four consecutive meetings of the council, and by further amending the provisions for filling a vacancy on the county council, and placing such amendments on-
Chair, can I interrupt? There's some belief that you don't actually have a second to take a vote on the bill. That it's not off the table yet, that there was a motion to take it off the table and then a discussion, and nobody heard a second to take it up.
There was a second to take it off the table.
I had Jerry and John.
I can have Jerry and John also.
Okay, well.
But we have a call for the vote. Do we have a second for a call for the vote?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of calling for the vote?
Aye.
No.
No. No.
Okay, would you do a roll call on whether we're calling for the vote?
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
It's failed at 3:30.
Okay, motion fails.
The question is whether, you failed to take a vote, so the question is whether or not then you'll return it to the table.
I-
I move to return it to the table. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Though 3827 is back on the table. Are there any other announcements or miscellaneous this evening? You see why it's hard to come up with a solution on smoking? Word adjourned.